Welcome to the Deerfield zoning board of appeals meeting. It's Thursday, June 13th. I'd like to remind everybody that the meeting is being taped. So our first item is to review the minutes. We have two sets of minutes here to look over. If anybody has any changes that need to be made, take care of that. If not, make a motion to accept them. Everybody's had an opportunity. Bob?
You got down, I was present, but I wasn't participating on the March 7th, on the hearing relative to Deerfield.
The Gilman-Dash deal?
Right. In the, in the report, it shows who voted and who didn't.
Okay. I just want to...
Yeah.
It says that you recused yourself.
Okay. I just don't want to go to jail for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got you.
Third paragraph down. Make, so make a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes of April 11th and March 7th.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll note that the minutes from April 11th, or March 7th and April 11th will be admitted. So on tonight's agenda, oh, before, before I get to that, members voting this evening, Bernie, myself, Kathy, Rich, and we have, need one more vote. We've got a couple of alternates. Does anybody not want to vote, or have a reason to? No? No? Okay. Okay.
You two decide.
Well, Adam?
Doesn't make a difference to me. I'll vote here.
I'll vote.
We can flip a coin.
Flip a coin if you want. Okay.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. You got a coin?
No. I don't think I do.
You got the double-headed coin, or what?
I guess we'll have to resort to something else. I don't have a coin.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Bernie.
All right, he's got one.
All right. Call it in the air, Adam. Let's tails.
All right. So Bob will vote.
Bob's voting.
All right.
Bernie thinks?
Yep.
Okay. So on the gen, on the agenda tonight is a application for the construction of a new addition and remodel of an existing garage construction, of a new second-floor bedrooms over existing garage, and new first-floor addition. And the applicant is requesting relief from sideline setback of 10 feet to three feet on a pre-existing grandfathered lot. So, Charles? Charles?
Yeah.
You'd like to come to the table and state your name and your address, and then you can fill us in on what you'd like to do.
Yeah. My name's Charles Bator. A couple of years ago, my relationship with Guy and Sarah, who are the owners of the property, they contract, they hired me to design a remodel of their, their, their home, which they had recently purchased, which I did. And then they contacted me recently because they would, wanted to add on to the, to the same building, and would I, would I do the plans for them? They said, yes, I would. And, but we, and we looked at where they ideally would like to, to locate the new addition. And it, the location does not meet the setback requirements, which is the reason for our application for the special permit. So, we're, we're presenting our, our plans and our, you know, our proposal to you tonight. At the, at the, we, we initially presented this request back on March, March 21st. At that time, you know, I presented the material at that time, but as Guy and Audrey, Guy and Sarah were away, when it became clear that if it was put to the vote and it was, it was voted down, we would not have the opportunity to re-present it for a two-year interim, I believe. And so, not being able to consult with Guy and Sarah at that time is not a decision I wanted to, to take on my own. And so, we withdrew without prejudice. So we're now, which is one of the reasons why we're, we're re-presenting the proposal, because Guy and Sarah are able to, to be present and to speak to their own case. I'm more here as the initial applicant, and also to answer any, you know, any technical questions that might be pertinent to the, to the application, since I'm going to be, hopefully, responsible for designing their addition for them. And, you know, my role is, I'm a designer and a builder, and so I'm, I'm the, I'm the kind of structural and, you know, building end of the, of the, of the application. And, and it's, but it's, it's, it's fairly simple addition. It just, you know, it didn't meet the setback requirements. Having, being in this profession and the trade for many decades, I'm aware of how boundaries and property lines can become, can become issues. And, but these are, they vary very much from location to location. This particular location where they're planning to build looks out on a large, their neighbors, but it's surrounded on all side by, by open meadow, open fields, open farmland, none of which I believe is ever going to be developed in, in the future. So there's plenty of space, albeit constrained by, by property lines around the building. There's not, there aren't really any, any physical limitations. There is not, there are no encroachments on any neighbor or butters' privacy. So, those are just the characteristics of this, of this project. So, so that's about as much as I can, I can, information I can give you, other than anything specific you might want to know about the, about the, about the structure. So, that's my contribution at this point.
Thank you. Any questions?
Let's see, the application is for hardship?
That's correct.
Do you have anything to support the hardship?
I think I would like to invite, you know, Guy and Sarah as the owners, as the family members, to speak to that, to speak to that issue.
Just before you leave, so, what is the distance from the property line now?
It's non-conforming. It's currently from the corner of the existing garage, it's four feet.
Okay. So it's currently four feet?
Correct.
And so, you're proposing that it become three, it's going to be three feet?
Well, be, be, the existing building and the property lines are not parallel. They are, they're at angles, they're at a slight angle. I have a plan I could show you.
That would be excellent.
Yeah. So as they, as we go out, the...
We're just trying to get, I'm just trying to get an idea if it's going to be more non-conforming, or the same amount of non-con, okay. It's going to be a foot more?
Yeah. So, so here's the, here's the existing building, and the dash line. So the distance at this corner to the property line is 4.1 feet. As we, if we build the addition, you see how they, because it's tapered, that offset becomes 3.1 feet. So the...
How many feet is that extended for?
It is 18, 18 feet.
Right.
So, so we changed the offset of the building...
And basically run the property line right out?
Well, at the point that, at the point that we end the addition, the offset is 3.1 feet.
And what's this right here? Is this something that's existing?
No. This is the proposed.
Okay. What's this right here? Sorry. Oh, that's just the line, that's just measurements. Okay.
This is the dimension, this is, this is the, this is the proposed addition.
So 3.1.
So, yes. We changed the, the, the distance from, from the existing building to the proposed addition from, by a foot.
So four, it was, it's four foot more.
Would you, would you run out another 20 feet against the property line?
But it doesn't get closer then?
No. It's, it's, see, his existing is the hatch there.
This is, this is, right now, is only 20 feet non-conforming, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then you add another...
18 feet.
18 feet non-conforming.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah. And, and so at that point, the offset becomes 3.1 feet. So, we get a foot.
We have a 10-foot.
Correct. Side offset, currently, yes.
That's the bylaw.
Yeah. And this was, you know, pre-existing.
I understand.
Okay. That was helpful. Thank you.
But there's 30 feet on the other side of us.
Correct. Yes.
But you're going to be building, the additional square footage on that first-floor level is how much?
It's 18 by 22.
So that's significant. 400 square feet.
Correct.
If my math is right, but I went the frontier, so.
Yes.
And you're doing a second story on top of something?
Yes. So... The first-floor addition ext, this is the first-floor addition, then on top of the, this, the existing garage, and the new addition.
And the addition is a second story.
Is a second story.
Full story?
Yeah.
We don't, haven't have, we don't have it designed yet. So it, we don't want to make it any taller than we need it to be. It doesn't necessarily, the current house has, is within, the rooms are within the roof. So there's, inside the rooms, there's a knee wall. It's not, it's not a full second story.
How wide is the existing house?
I thought so, but I just wanted to see where.
Yeah. It's probably 22, 24 feet, something like that.
Wide?
Correct.
So, the most you could probably have would be a 10-pitch on that roof. It's probably less.
Yeah.
Because you're only 22 feet.
Yeah.
I know my house is 24 feet wide, and the best we could do was a 10-pitch. That was 1970.
Yeah.
And the, and the inside height is only a little over seven feet.
Well, sometimes you just get what you get. Thank you.
Thanks.
Does that clarify your...
But what is the reason you cannot relocate these bedrooms on the other side of the property where you have 30 feet between your property line?
Because we, we just built a new addition on that side that has windows looking to the, to the north. The land slopes away down to the driveway. The master bedroom is on that end of the building, whereas the children's bedroom is on the south end. So, I think both, both practically and logistically, it's not a good, it's not a good fit.
The bathroom.
Yeah. May we jump in?
Certainly.
You're on the table?
Yeah. Please come up and then slowly say your names, because I've got a...
Sure.
I'm Guy Ardrey.
Sarah Ardrey.
Thank you.
No, I, the, the whole reason we were considering this is because we have young kids. And when we, we bought the house about five years ago, and we needed to, and when we renovated it before we moved in, the layout called for a certain, you know, the bedrooms for the kids, and they're pretty small. And the kids are older now, and they're growing, and they're, and we'd like them to have some space to have friends over and have a little bit more of a bedroom. So the only real option for us, from the way that the house is situated, is...
With the driveway where it is.
Yeah. With the driveway where it is, and also with just the layout of the house, and where the kitchen is, and the, that the side where we actually have room to build, just, it wouldn't work for what we were hoping to do, for, for bedrooms for the kids. So, so we started thinking, we have this, this sort of old shed garage on a certain footprint, and we were under the impression that we could build on that. And then the, what we were hoping was to, can we extend further backwards from that? It's going away from the street and any view. The only real view of it would be from the farm next door, as far as different size of the current structure. So anyway, ultimately, it's, we just, we're a growing family, and we would love to have the kids have some bigger bedrooms. And the only place where we can do that would be on a second floor above the garage, in that spot. Anything else to add?
Just that that was also the closest to an existing bathroom in the structure, so there isn't a need for a new bathroom. Building onto the other side, as, as we were talking about before, the potential of that would mean another bathroom in that area, too. So we were trying to limit the plumbing.
And we've talked, we've talked it over with the, with the neighbors. Historic Deerfield owns the house, and Phil Zay, who's the head of Historic Deerfield, lives in that house. I can let, they have a representative here tonight. So I don't want to speak for them, but all the conversations with Phil have been encouraging. Certainly question, you know, making sure we have it clearly staked out where the property line is. But we've had no, we've had nothing but encouragement from the neighbors as far as going forward with something like this. But yeah, but ultimately, it's just for, for, for the kids.
Well, I, I remember Phil Zay was here, and he didn't have any particular opposition to your folks in general, but he did say that he was concerned about the setbacks as a general thing in Historic Deerfield. That, you know, their, their position was that the houses should stay, you know, spread to the town bylaw. But if I remember what he said correctly.
I think that's what he said.
I wasn't here then, right?
Yeah.
So the existing building that's there right now is a dilapidated garage? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Does it have a concrete foundation, or what does it have?
Uh, yes. It has a concrete foundation.
So it is a substantial structure?
Yes.
And it was all built 100 years ago?
No. The house was built in the 50s.
Yeah.
And...
I think that part was added on, though, the, at least one of the bays of the garage.
There are two bays to the garage. And I think the...
Before we owned it.
The one closest to the house is the, is the older one of the two. And then the second bay was built, was added on. And I think you mentioned that it was a...
When I can approach and speak. Did you consider keeping it at four foot, one inches away, just so it wouldn't be more non-conforming?
We, we want to keep the same, we don't want to go further than the current existing structure. So we would want to just keep that same footprint that already exists, but just take it further back. And we approached Historic Deerfield about buying six feet of land to, to make it conforming, but they didn't want to do that. So, the, yeah, so basically, it's just taking that line straight back.
Because you want to use the same foundation, or...
Well, we want to use as much as we can, and we have that footprint.
Yeah.
And then we would just continue it further backwards.
Yeah.
Because up...
Because it kind of angles, but you, you didn't want to angle it to keep it.
Well, there's, I, I, it's about a foot or two difference between the front of the existing structure and the back of the proposed structure in relation to the property line. So, I guess in theory, we could angle it a little bit. But it just, you know, to keep proportions with the house and keeping all the lines straight, it would, it would be slightly not parallel to the property line.
If you, if you paralleled the property line, would you still need to be here for...
Yeah. Because it would be new, new...
I still don't...
It would be, it'd still be non-conforming, but wouldn't be more non-conforming? I was just trying to get an idea.
Well, it is more non-conforming because it's taking up an additional...
No, it is now, but if, if they...
Right.
But it would be...
Gotcha.
At an additional 400 square feet, we're going to be consumed...
Good point.
...within that area.
And I still think that there's a legal issue, that we can even, even grant the permit if we wanted to.
Well, no. You can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. Yeah, that's against the law. Unless there's a extenuating circumstance, or a hardship, or...
Right.
And that's what we have to take into consideration.
Is it, but the existing footprint, am I, are we correct in thinking that, I mean, that, that's grandfathered in, I guess?
It's grandfathered, grandfathered in, it's non-conforming, and, and it's okay the way it is, but to make it more non-conforming...
By making it bigger, higher, and closer?
Yeah. Closer to the boundary. That's where the problem is.
I was just thinking of the closer, but you're right. It's longer, too.
But I, I don't know if he could, he might be, I don't think he could put three floors in it, though.
Right.
He can't exceed 35 feet, but I don't think the zoning allows the third floor.
No.
The only way they could come up with 400 square feet.
We would only propose to keep the same roofline as the existing house.
I heard your architect say that. But I'm just trying to think of what ways you can...
Other creative ways to do it, get around it, right?
Yeah. I mean, if you built a freestanding addition on the other side where your master bedroom is, you've got 30 feet there between the property lines. You know, granted, you'll have to put another bathroom in, probably, and, and you'll, you know, but you have the ability to, to put a structure that size on that, it's just not as convenient, especially because of the view you've got at the meadow. Am I right?
Not much of a view thing. It's more the, it's more the layout, the way it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, it's an aesthetic thing, too. The garage isn't particularly attractive, and the view from the street, although you can't really see it from the street, because it's set back from Old Main Street. But, you know, I think the idea would just, to take an old shed garage and make it look like a nice...
I haven't been up through there in a number of years, but I'm trying to visualize the square house that the Yazwinskis lived in for years in a dairy barn out back. What side are, are you on of that?
We're on the north side of that.
You're on the north side?
Yeah.
There used to be a building at one time on the right side when you went in, so you're right up in that area somewhere. But you're further back?
We're set back from, yeah, from Old Main Street. Yeah.
Okay. I think I...
There's a yellow house, which is the Historic Deerfield house.
Okay.
That's between the Yazwinskis' farm and our driveway.
And your driveway is on the Yazwinski's side, or...
No. It's on the north.
North side?
North side of that.
And you spoke, sorry.
I don't go up there that often, so I should have driven up there today.
Who did you speak with about buying land?
Uh, with Phil Zay. And I think he ran it by the, the board.
Brought it to the board of Historic Deerfield. Just, even, just a portion of it.
Yeah.
I think it goes again, I mean, I'm sure you can talk about this, but it's, I think it goes against their policy right now about any, any land that they're asked for. It's a precedent for their entire philosophy of...
Well, they don't make any more of it up there. It's not like you can insert a piece of land.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you're ready to speak?
We're very patient. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Coleman, and I'm here to represent Historic Deerfield.
Coleman?
K-A-L-L-M-A-N.
K-A-L-L?
L-L-M-A-N.
Okay.
And I'm the chief financial officer and assistant treasurer of Historic Deerfield.
She's got the big bucks.
I think Phil, he's not opposed to an addition, but he has concerns about the property line. And a variance was granted, he thinks, back in the 1960s, to build or extend and add another bay to the garage. In terms of selling the property, they're absolutely right. We are not in a position to sell. The board does not want to sell any part of the property. And further, I could add that Lot 4, which is where this sits, and I think maybe the Yazwinskis' farm might have part of Lot 4, actually in 1785 was, there was a very historical act that was held there. And so that's really part of the reason we don't want to sell. It's historical property. We don't want to sell our, you know, what we have, our property. And basically, back in 1785, there was an event of some historical significance that did take place in that area.
I've lived here all my life, but I wasn't there.
You weren't? Yes.
So they did get a variance once before?
Yes.
Do you have a copy?
To build the second, I don't have a copy. Phil was briefing me yesterday, but he said that he, there was a variance he understood was granted to build, add a second bay onto the garage.
How good are you at the research on masslandrecords.com to see if you could find it?
Well, I'm pretty good.
Want to look?
Right now?
Yeah.
Not so much.
All right. Every time I go to get on it, I can't get on it, so. If I go home and get on the laptop, I can find it eventually. So there's already been a variance, and a variance was granted for the garage, is, is that what he told you?
That is Phil's understanding, yes.
And that is where they went, within three feet of the line at that time?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Well, I think the, the current distance from the property line is about five feet.
He said it was a foot longer than the 3-1 that you're asking for. Something like that.
No. Survey, is it four feet?
Four. Yeah, four feet. At, at the narrowest end, it might be five feet.
Well, one thing that Phil was concerned with as well is that the survey is not based on the topography of the land, it's based on the map. And that's a concern, too, is, you know, having a survey that would be based actually on the topography as opposed to just points on an app.
Is this surveyed by a registered land surveyor?
Yes.
Yes?
Ee.
Okay. But it doesn't have any topographical information. Write it in. So was that part of the fort that they used to, or was the fort in Old Deerfield?
What he was saying is that basically, there was a meeting of some, approximately, he thinks, 200 people. It was Governor Belcher, the military, the governor's council, and 40 Native American tribes that converged in this area, and I don't, and signed an agreement that prevented further hostilities.
Very interesting reading that.
Yeah.
History on that.
Pretty fascinating, actually. So I think it comes, it, we need to, you know, we, we take it as our, part of our mission to preserve the land to the extent that we can.
We got to wait for Bernie to come back.
Yeah. I remember at the la, the last time we were looking at this, somebody had brought up the point that if a fence was put up, and somebody needed to put a ladder up to paint or do any maintenance on the addition, it was really tight, even for a lawnmower to get that through. So, I remember that point being brought up.
It would take us hours to find that variance. Because you got to find out who owned the property at that time, to be able to look it up that way.
That still doesn't really...
Excuse me?
But that still doesn't really give us the okay to make the...
Oh, I agree with you.
...not conforming, whether somebody told them they could put in their garage addition.
Yeah.
Where are we?
Were we, you was just asking.
Oh, thank you.
Any question, more questions for?
Thank you for your information.
Yeah, thank you.
So I guess before I close the, the meeting to the public and we go to a vote, I can offer you the same opportunity to.
Are we going to discuss it first, close it and discuss it?
We'd have to close it.
Okay.
But I wanted to let them know before, once I close the meeting and we start discussing and go to a vote.
It would be too late.
It's too late to withdraw it. If you want to explore more options, change that boundary going back, I know you expressed why you wanted to keep it the way you did, because from our standpoint, like I said already, we can't rightfully make it not, more nonconforming than it already is. And the fact that it was grandfathered, it's nonconforming, that kind of has to be left alone. We can't go and make it more nonconforming. You just can't, unless there's extenuating circumstances or a hardship.
If we kept the same, so we're under, have you understand that it's, they're not parallel? So they're, when you say more nonconforming, you mean it would be, get closer than the current four feet that it is from that?
Right.
So at the, at the back end of it, it would be closer than that?
Right, that's what I'm, yeah.
If we, if we, if it got no closer than the existing four feet with that?
Yeah, it says here, relief from sideline setback of ten feet to three feet.
Yes, if it makes any, any difference, absolutely, we would lose a foot.
I have one question.
Sure.
Did you explore with Historic Deerfield of swapping them square footage for square footage, where you could give them more land in the back to, so that they could convey you the existing four hundred square feet that you need, or roughly that along your, where you want to do your addition, and maybe give them four hundred feet of, or eight hundred feet back further? And sort of some swap for swap, but I'm not saying it's all equal, but did you explore the possibility of doing that with them?
We have not explored the possibility of swapping land, but my hunch is that that, I don't think they are too interested in.
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying that you may have a piece of property back here that's of more interest to them than what you think it might be, especially if something significant happened on that site. I'm just exploring that.
That's a great idea, yeah. But no, we have not explored that.
Do you have any sense of, of that as a, as an option?
I do not.
But I think adding on into that area at all, the length, even if you stay four feet, is still making, in my opinion, making the lot more nonconforming.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we, we would have to, we would have to keep the.
How many square feet are they adding beyond that?
Setback.
It's four hundred square feet.
So they're, they're doing the garage and then four hundred more.
Right, so they would have to move to the middle.
Well, you know, if we withdraw without prejudice at this point.
I don't see the square footage.
I don't see that in there.
Do a swap rather than, you know, a neck, you know, a gate, you know, then it's a, then it's a wash.
I just want to make sure, I totally understand, I see what you're saying, but I just want to make sure that I understand.
If they vote on it, then it's too young.
Right, so this is the, this is the.
No matter what they do, they have to be ten foot.
Right, from here to back, this is the existing.
My, my hunch is that.
I thought this was the garage.
The garage is in front. So they're going to, first, they're going to do the garage.
Apparently, that historical event happened right there.
So this is all.
They're going to want to protect the land right there.
Behind the garage.
Land further, land further back. So that area right outside the garage, I think is where that event supposedly took place.
Both ways, both ways, so all this square footage is not.
So.
It is a long, and I think Phil knows more.
You have to move over.
I don't know the need for.
Yes, full, full ten-foot setback to be, to be back. Not one foot, one foot wouldn't make a difference, it'd still be nonconforming.
Well, I can't.
In my opinion.
In your opinion?
Not, not conforming.
Because we've, we've had other cases come up where it was, when something was at one.
Right, but a lot of places are nonconforming lots of territory.
Well, this wasn't.
I, I mean, I guess the theory we can try that, but I'm not.
I mean, we have that.
Board.
But that's, the other option is.
What catches me is what you said about the bylaw works against the bylaw.
Controlling.
Because we have a lot of say.
But you just wonder, see, if we.
I don't know what this bump, if you brought that over to here.
If you brought this out here ten feet.
We just have to.
So from the property line.
Whatever the new addition.
So this was ten feet out, and this was ten feet out here.
Consistently parallel, there's just no greater than ten feet from the property line.
And they gave them a section like that out of it.
Yeah, whatever.
Or, 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 you know.
If we redesigned it that way, we wouldn't need any sort of permission to do that.
And they got double the square footage, yeah, we, but it would have more than.
Keep the same footprint.
I don't know if it'd have over sixty thousand square feet at that point, which is what we had in the school. I don't know. This thing's only got forty-eight feet, if I read it right.
So here's what we were, we were proposing, and, you know, it would, it couldn't be as, it couldn't be as wide. We have to make.
Or come this way, jog.
Right, and the jog right now, we're about four feet, ten feet, so it would have to.
I don't think that's right.
Twenty-two feet, so we brought it in by six feet, and then go, it would be, have to be reduced to sixteen feet.
But there's no second story on that, it's not affecting that.
I thought that we were going to do a second story on the whole thing.
So that's, that's not going to be possible to have that in your state.
It would make it more difficult.
Yeah, well, it's not.
It'd be hard to pause.
Does, does.
Because we'd have to go into this part of the.
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
But that's, but that's, I mean, their decision doesn't impact that, so.
I don't know whether we can do that anyway.
Right, if they, if they vote this down, it means you can't re-submit for a special permit, but you can.
But if we redesigned that, then.
Then it's, it doesn't, it just, it just make.
Getting turned down wouldn't impact that.
No.
Yeah.
Is that correct? If we, if we ask you to vote on the, on the current plan.
Right.
It gets denied, we can redesign the, we can design it so it's conforming, and then we, there's no reason for, it simply.
For the variance.
Means you wouldn't.
Require a variance.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't affect.
Right.
Yeah.
But putting a second story above the existing footprint, would that need to be approved?
It has to do with the square footage. I think the building inspector could help you through that process with what you're required, what you're allowed to do.
But you can sit with the building inspector and go through all the scenarios to try to figure out what he can do statutorily-wise, so you don't have to come for a permit. Okay, but he has some, you know, he has those decisions. I hear rumors that there's going to be a new building inspector appointed next week, though. So, but I thought Dick was going to be here tonight, but I, I don't see him.
But he did leave comments, did you want to read them?
Yeah, read them.
I'm going to read them aloud.
Okay. This is from Mr. Kalaszewski, our current building commissioner. RA zoning requires two hundred feet of frontage, sixty thousand square feet, lot is nonconforming, does not meet the requirements for variance, self-carrugated hardship, self-created, I guess, a little hard to read. Board should.
Proceed with caution.
Proceed with caution. Got from our interim town administrator, but checked off here from the select board. Concerned that there is no hardship, lot would be even further nonconforming. No hardship, setbacks are too small for variance. That's from the board of selectmen, from their interim town administrator.
The rest, they didn't have.
The rest were no comments on the other boards.
Do we have the assessor's card there, by any chance?
The assessor's.
Card.
Oh, but they wrote no comment on there.
No, but I just wondered what the card said, because normally on a card, it'll tell you there's been a variance granted.
Yeah. Because if we swap land, we end up having an agreement there.
Well, the assessor's card tells you all about the property. You give it a book and a page number, and.
If it's turned down, we're still going to be able to build it jogging in like that.
Might be there somewhere. Karen usually prints them out.
I think this is from, this is signed from Karen right here.
All right, is that the?
So, I think.
The assessor's card?
Does that sound okay?
I'm, I'm looking at, this is signed by Karen. It doesn't have anything about previous, it has the, it doesn't have any previous.
All right.
I'll keep looking here.
Hey, would you like to proceed?
Yeah, if you have, yes, we would, I think the, we will separately explore the idea of swapping with Historic Deerfield, but that wouldn't, your decision wouldn't have any bearing on that because we would then have the right amount of property. But as far as this project goes, not being able to build along that same line going back would make it very hard for us to put two bedrooms there, because it would cut into that back part too much. So, so yes, I think the whole project sort of is based upon getting the variance on that. So we would, we would like a decision.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so at this time, I'll close the meeting, seven forty P.M., and open up any discussion here, comments? Anybody additional comments, concerns, no?
I don't think the applicant's demonstrated a substantial hardship. And he has, he has means of putting an eight hundred square foot, or a four hundred square foot addition on the property. You know, but two stories, so it's actually eight hundred square feet, right? I think he has the alternative of putting it on the other side. It's not the most aesthetic or what have you, but he has the ability to, to do that.
Prepared to vote?
I am.
Everybody prepared to vote? Bob?
I move we deny the variance.
Rich?
Yes, I agree.
To deny?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes, deny.
Me as well, deny. Bernie? Adams.
Also deny.
Okay. Okay, well, unanimous vote to deny the application for the variance. Thank you, thank you. Yep, you're welcome. At this time, I don't have any new correspondence. Or mail. There's nothing in there, was there?
No, but I want to look for that sheet where we vote, we write our votes.
Yep.
Before we, before anybody leaves.
It was in an orange folder.
That orange folder.
There's something coming up with the, the planning board's going to change some zoning bylaws.
Oh, I have it right here.
You have, have you got any correspondence on that?
Oh, no, I meant I have the voting page.
No, no, but on the, they're supposed to be changing some of the zoning bylaws.
Did you see anything in there then?
Oh, they have to have a public hearing, right?
Yeah, but I think it's next week, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, I haven't got any emails from anybody.
I don't think, I think we need to find out the board.
Would you?
There you go. Just pass it around.
Oh, he's with me today, he's all right.
Good kid. Sounds fun. I shouldn't say he's funny, it's a learning experience.
Yeah?
He says he's, he's a lot different than I thought he was going to be.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Did Bob sign it yet, or?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So, in the top part, as far as findings, because it was, we had pretty detailed, we are saying that there was no hardship.
No hardship.
It was an inconvenience, not a hardship.
So we see him in a car with you, is that what he is, riding the wheel?
We have a bunch with myself, Mark.
Yeah.
Brian, Jen, Tyler, all two training. I think we have six new people.
Because there's going to be some more openings, I guess.
Hopefully, yeah, we get, we're lucky, we get two older young ass men.
I don't.
One's a retired lieutenant, the other one's a retired sergeant.
Yeah, I think so, too, I was just going to write this.
We need to keep a balance of people that have experience and age, and then, or the new guys, new people, too, so.
Okay.
So we have no new business and no mail to review, so.
Bob's going to look at to see if there's a planning board posting on zoning bylaw changes.
Oh, that's where he went, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's posted, but I can't read it.
Okay, so maybe we should all make a concerted effort to review the bylaw changes, is that what you're suggesting?
Do you know what the gist of it is?
Well, water and conservation issues, et cetera, it's going to make the lot, make properties harder to develop.
And so then we'll need to, if whatever passes, we'll have to update our.
Oh, yeah. But there's a public hearing, I think it's next week. I can't read it, it's, it's on the board this.
Is this the same bylaw that was put in illegally into the town meeting?
I don't think so, that was different.
That was different, that was pretty.
And that was screwy, because actually, they were making it, the developer could do much more, which was the opposite effect they wanted.
I understand.
You know what, they forgot this, but I'll just put it without a file.
Motion to adjourn?
You don't want me to sign anything?
Yes, I do, did you not?
No, because I left.
That's right, there you go, sir.
Second the motion to adjourn, all those in favor? All right, vote. Okay, motion to adjourn at seven forty-six.
All right, thanks a lot.